Good evening. Welcome to Charter Township of Van Buren Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 8th of 2018. We'll start with a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Medina Atchison.
Here.
Sherri Budd.
Here.
Joan Fransway.
Here.
Carol Thompson.
Here. Thank you very much. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Commissioner Boynton, support. Commissioner Kelly, any changes or additions to the agenda? All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the agenda is approved. We have minutes from the regular meeting of July 25th of 2018. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Support.
Commissioner Kelly with support. Commissioner Boynton, any corrections or changes to the minutes? None? All in favor of approving the July 25th, 2018 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are approved. Tonight's agenda, we have several public hearings. We'll start first with a special approval request. The applicant, Rachesa Architects, is requesting special approval to construct a multi-tenant retail building with a drive-through restaurant. The subject property is located at 10573 and 10551 Belleville Road. First, we'll have a presentation by the applicant. Before we do that, I'd like to open the public hearing. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please? Commissioner Boynton? Support Commissioner Fransway. All in favor of opening the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Public hearing is now open. And as I said, we'll have a presentation by the applicant. And then we would ask if you would like to speak to this agenda item. And we welcome comments. If you would come to the podium, tell us your name and your address. And if you would keep your comments specific to this agenda item, there'll be a chance to speak on other items later on in the meeting. But first, we'll start with presentation by the applicant.
I'm Ron Kiesa from RA Kiesa Architects. With me tonight is Jason Kishmish, one of the owners for the development. Some of you may remember, we were here about three years ago to look at a project similar, but it was smaller in nature. We had 100-foot wide piece of property on Belleville Road. It was a little bit tight to work with and meet the requirements of the community as well as satisfy my clients' needs to lease out space. We did get a tentative site plan approval, our preliminary on that project. We did get our special land use for the drive-through window. So subsequent to the time that, from when we did get our original approval before we submitted back, my client got into negotiations trying to get additional property so we could make a better development, something that fit a little bit better with what the community is looking for, as well as what my client was looking for. We were having difficulty with the way the building was designed, and the only way we could make it work as a multi-tenant building was with the angled parking and one-way drive all the way around. That made it very difficult for Jason to find tenants that were happy with that because of the difficulties of that. Typically, you'll see one-way circulation around a building for a fast-food restaurant like McDonald's, Burger King, Wendy's. They're a single purpose, and that works fine for that. But for a multi-tenant, when you have people coming in and out, and then having to circle around a building, it's just not advantageous. So it took a while. Jason was able to secure some more property. And so we've been working with Ron since January of this year. We're at our third or fourth rendition for this project, for the building, with the drive-through still. Jason was able to maintain that national tenant desire to come to this location through this whole delay. Not very happy about the delays, but they've stayed with him. So we're here tonight to ask for a special land use for the drive-through, as well as later on, the preliminary site plan approval. So, you know, with that said, I guess I'll yield to moving this along.
Great. Thank you very much. Anyone who wants to speak to this agenda item about the drive-through restaurant for this property on Belleville Road? Any questions or comments from the commission? Nothing? Last chance to the audience. Motion to close the public hearing, please. Commissioner Fransway, support. Mr. Kelly, was that you? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks. So no comments at this time, but we, as you say, we do have reviews that we will hear from the professionals and have you back up here later on in the agenda. We'll keep moving through our public hearings at this point. Thank you. Second public hearing tonight is a rezoning. The applicant, US Signal Properties LLC, is requesting to rezone the property located at 9275 Hagerty Road from C1, which is general business, to OT, which is office technology. The subject property is located at 9275 Hagerty Road. Start with a motion to open the public hearing, please. Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner Atchison. Thank you. Support Commissioner Boynton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing for the rezoning is now open, same as last time. We'll have a presentation by the applicant, and then we'd enjoy hearing comments from the audience on this agenda item. And come on up to the podium, tell us your name and address, and speak to this item, and then other items later in the meeting. But we'll start with a presentation by the applicant. Good evening.
Hello. I am Dave Wiz. I am the EVP of Operations for US Signal Company out of Grand Rapids. This is in reference to 9275 Hagerty Road, which occupies the corner of Tyler and Hagerty. It would be the northwest side of that road. Approximately an eight acre parcel that we would very much like to build a data center facility. We're an IT services and network provider, and currently, within the Midwest, we operate the existing data center facilities on approximately 14,000 round miles of fiber. Our intended use of the property would be technological in nature, so we request kindly the rezoning of that parcel from the current commercial one indicated item over to the office technological.
Great. We'll see if anyone has any comments from the audience on this agenda item. Anyone from the commission? Questions or comments? You're all very quiet tonight. I'm expecting that when we start to go through the plans, you'll have more to say. All right. Last chance to the audience. Anything on the rezoning request? Hearing none, we'll have a motion to close the public hearing, please. I'll take Commissioner Jar with support from Commissioner Budd. All in favor of closing this public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
And no one's opposed. All right. And the third public hearing tonight is a zoning ordinance text amendment. The proposed amendment, OT, let's see, sorry. The proposed amendment of the zoning ordinance, which adds high-tech data processing and computer centers as a permitted use in M1 light industrial zoning district. And we are our own applicant, so I'm going to ask Director Akers if you would make the presentation as soon as we open the public hearing. So could I have a motion to open the public hearing, please? Commissioner Boynton, support. Commissioner Atchison, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Same deal. Public hearing, short presentation, and then any comments, we'd love to hear them, and come on up to the podium. So Director Akers, walk us through it, please.
Okay, thank you. I've included the definition for the land use for high-tech data processing and computer centers in the August 1st, 2018 memo. That's included in your packets. And I won't go through the definition, but currently in the zoning ordinance, these uses are limited to our OT office technology district. However, we do have a facility that would fall under this category, which is currently located in a light industrial zoning district. One of the reasons why we considered adding this to the M1, and subsequently, because of the way the M1, the MT and the M2 districts work, these type of uses would also be allowed in there, is that these types of land uses are appropriate for industrial areas, as they tend to have similar power requirements, and they utilize these similar types of warehouse buildings and larger facilities. Data centers and computer centers are typically less intensive uses, as they have significantly less truck traffic and less activity on the site. As you know, they're larger, typically larger warehouses that house these fairly large pieces of equipment. By allowing this as a permitted use in the M1 district, this could be allowed in any of our industrial districts, and so it would not only open up opportunity to other areas for this type of use, but it would also clarify requirements for existing facilities within the community. I know one of the comments that came up, and this may have been as part of US Signal's rezoning request, was regarding whether or not we allowed these types of uses in our industrial districts. And in the past, we have permitted expansions. We've done certain things to incorporate them into the industrial district, specifically with the Chase facility on Hagerty and Tyler. So one of the intents with this is to clarify that and make sure that our zoning ordinance is up to date with some of the practices that we've had in the past.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone from the audience? Questions or comments on this amendment to the zoning ordinance? Anyone of the commissioners? Questions or comments? Last chance to the audience. Motion to close the public hearing, please. Commissioner Fransway, support. Commissioner Boynton, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So that's our public hearing. Not too much from the public. Let's see what happens as we get into the next phase of our business tonight. This is under new business. Item one is Phase One of a site plan approval. The applicant, ACS Michigan, is requesting Phase One of site plan approval per the approved development agreement to construct an automotive research and development facility. The subject property is located at 50015 Michigan Avenue, otherwise known as the Harold Smith Farm. And we'll start with a presentation by the applicant. Do you have materials to set up? We'll get them set up, and then we'll go from there.
My name is Gary Tressel. I'm a law clerk, senior associate. Business address is 555 Hewlett Drive, Bloomfield Hills, Michigan. And with me tonight is Melissa Koda. She's one of our associates, and is the project manager for this project. What we're before you tonight about is that we have an offshore firm that wants to build potentially in Van Buren Township. We're under some extreme tight timelines, because the building needs to be occupied by the end of '19. So we've been working with the township, with the county, with the MEDC and other groups in order to try to implement the mass grading of the site and shelling of the building while we finish the drawings, because we physically can't go as fast as what would be your normal procedure. So Ron has worked with us in great detail to try to advance the development in order to allow us to move while the weather is still good yet this year, to move the dirt, and to get a pad set up for the building's shell. And so what we're here tonight to ask for is approval of the development agreement, and to briefly introduce you to the project. And we've just dropped off sets for preliminary site plan approval. And if everything goes well with reviews and all that, we hope to be back here on the 22nd to fully go through the entire set of documents. But for now, we will give you a brief overview.
Great. Thank you.
Project, Mr. Smith's house is right in this location over here, and for those, this Michigan Avenue, railroad tracks, E-course is down here. And the site would be bought by one owner, okay? It won't be sold or divided in the future. And the rezoning is moving through the process. I don't think it's been through yet. Has it been approved?
Yes.
It has been approved. Okay. So as a part of the rezoning, it was agreed to by Mr. Smith and subsequent to the potential purchaser of this property, that the easterly 400 feet of the property would be kept in buffer landscaping, retention pond, and earthen berms in order to screen and give buffer to the Denton Village residents. So the entire development at this time is this structure right here, which is going to be a 70,000 square foot, two-story building for research and development. The intent is to have one driveway off of Michigan Avenue, and to come down, and this will be a secured parking area for test vehicles, future vehicles that are going to be tested for various processes. We do have a test area down here, which is a low-speed noise-type testing. It's not skidding cars around on a pad at 90 mile an hour or any of that stuff. It's a low-speed testing facility. The parking for the site, we have not as much as to meet your ordinance, but we have plenty of room to add. And so we've shown future land bank parking and that type of stuff. We'll go to the next slide. What we have here is we have some pictures. The blue arrow right here will show where it was taken, what it looks like today, and what it's going to look like after the building is built, okay? Might be a little hard for some of you to see, but certainly, we can make these available. So this is the building as it'll sit on the site, and that's how visible it'll be from that corner that we just showed you. We have three or four of these. Again, this is looking from Cemetery in Michigan, looking southwest. This is the farm, barn, and the house. And here's the new building back here, okay? So as you can see, it's very low impact for the visual for people going by. Again, one right here. And again, this is the building over here. This is the berm. This berm will be 10 feet high. It'll be planted on the top of the 10 feet, and over time, and it'll have a chain-link fence that'll go along the base of the berm. And the reason for that chain-link fence is to secure the area for the user and to not have people go up on the berm and sit there and watch what they're doing over the other side of the berm, okay? So again, here, this is right off of Cemetery and Cross. That's what it looks like today. And this is a detention pond that we're going to put here. And this outlets to the Denton Drain, and it'll have restricted flow. We've currently submitted plans to Wayne County for their approval of the stormwater management system on the site. And today, we secured our soil erosion permit, right? Yeah. So the, but again, you can barely see anything going on on the backside of that berm from the residential. Okay. One more up here. That's what you see today, and that's what's going to be seen in the future. As part of this, let's go to the next picture. Go back to the site plan now. Oh, I'm too far. As part of what's going on today on the site, just so you're all aware, there's a drain that crosses this site. It's called the Denton Drain, and it comes out about, right about here into the site, goes across Mr. Smith's property, and comes all the way down to this area here, okay? That drain was built in 1917. It's not functional. It's collapsed in some places, and some places it has backfall in excess of three and a half feet. The water's supposed to be going this way, and it has to climb a hill, three and a half feet, in order to drain out. So as a part of this project, we have requested from the county, and will be working with the township, to vacate this portion of the drain on this property. The water that comes to this area will be picked up in an onsite collection system, and it will be taken around the building and over to the drain that it currently is supposed to be going to. We also are proposing a water main that will come from Cross and Cemetery, and it'll come across and go around the building, come out, go across Michigan Avenue, and tie back into a 12-inch water main, which will improve the water pressures and dual-feed for that area. So we are submitted to MDOT for our approach, okay, currently, and have not got a review yet. But the intent is not to ever access anything on the east side over here with vehicles or any of that type of stuff, because there's no need to go out there. We're connected to Michigan Avenue, okay? So I'm available, answering any questions if you would like, or, oh, let's go to the building. Forgot the building. Jerry! With us, we have HED and ECS and Dickinson, right? And so the whole group is here in case you have something. But let's have Jerry go through his building plan real quick, so you can kind of get a flavor of what's going to happen here, and then we can go from there.
My name's Jerry Philo with the Harley Ellis Devro, with the Architects of Record for the project, and also doing all the engineering work for the building design. From this plan here, this was actually our code summary sheet that was used, but it provides an overview of what is the first floor of the building, and also the second floor of the building. The office portion is two-story. The test area, which is all of the space back here, is all single-story high bay, clear to about 24 feet to the bottom of the structure. So that's where the test vehicles will be at. They have vehicle hoists. We're going to have a couple of chassis dynamometers for them to do emissions testing. They will do some certification testing. We'll then go up to the EPA site in Ann Arbor for certification of vehicles to comply with EPA requirements for emissions. So that's the primary function for both of the test cells. They're not very much in the way of true developmental, but they will be doing some, no durability testing, anything like that. So it's all a single passenger car, or single, you know, personally-owned vehicles, I should say, for the types of vehicles that'll be tested. Nothing larger than that. It's the Subaru line, if you're familiar with it. It's mostly subcompact to compact vehicles, both automobiles and in their small crossovers and SUVs. So if we can click back for me, please, Melissa, to the elevations. The building, approximate height to the top of the parapet is approximately 28 feet. So that'll be the worst height that we have for the building, and that's actually in this test area here. So there will be some rooftop equipment that will have screen walls surrounding the equipment as required by the ordinance, so that all the rooftop equipment is screened for all the building HVAC systems. So the facade's mostly made up of metal siding. The office component has metal siding and some vertical windows to break up that horizontal plane and the horizontal mass with the vertical windows that'll be on both the north side, that would be facing Michigan Avenue, and then some on the south side as well, and on the west side, although the building isn't quite north-southeast unless we refer to it that way as planned, north-southeast and west. So the test side, there will be some garage doors, but most of the testing area is just going to be metal siding with very few windows. And that's primarily because of the vehicles that are being tested. They are prototypes, so they don't want people snooping around and using the, you know, long cameras with the telephoto lenses to try and take pictures through the windows. So we try to keep that area somewhat more of a secure space. That's why there's very little glass on the testing side. So I do have samples of the siding materials for the colors, if you wish to see that, and also a sample of the glass that I can just put up, and you can pass it around. They're not very heavy, so.
Great. We always like to see samples.
Sure.
That'd be wonderful.
All right. Any questions otherwise from anyone?
Not at this time. I think we'll keep going with your presentation, and then hear the reviews, and we may have questions at that point. Thank you.
So as I stated in the beginning, our goal here tonight is to have the development agreement approved, and to be able to move to the next step, which is getting contractors on-site to start mass grading dirt and that type of stuff. The project has not been closed on, and the owner is not able to close on it until we get through this step, and we get through preliminary site plan approval to be sure he understands what can be built on this site before he buys the property.
Just a little quick explanation for the materials here. This is a siding sample that is typical for the majority of the elements on the building. This is a paint chip sample for an accent that we will have, that will be a little bit in some of the areas, possibly along this top apron, and then some on this west elevation. And then this is a typical glass for the tint on this side of what the glass will look like, so that you know what you're seeing when you pass it around.
Great. Thank you very much.
And the corrugation that's on here will be the same throughout, so.
And that will wait. If you have questions, we'll come back to the podium.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Director Akers, I wanted to ask you, do you want to start with the development agreement, since that sets up how we've done these reviews?
Yes. I was actually hoping I could just kind of give a broad timeline over how the whole project has transpired, and where we're at, and what the different phased approvals mean, just for the sake of the planning commission, for the sake of clarification. So as you know, we have been looking at the Harold Smith Farm property for well over a year. We've gone through a master plan amendment. We've gone through a rezoning, and now we're looking at site plans for a potential development. Just to kind of give a brief overview, staff became aware of the potential for this project after the master plan amendment had gone through at this location. And so as we were initiating the rezoning process from the applicant, is when we really began to have serious conversations with the applicant regarding this project. One of the things that we knew ahead of time, and one of the things that we had done was we, as we had noticed the master plan project, was that, you know, any change at the site in the Denton Village area was going to be sensitive, and we wanted to make sure that we were taking and taking the extra steps and making the extra effort to notify the residents who live in that area as to what's going on. So as we were communicating with the applicant, that was something that they understood and were willing to partner with us to take on. So as we were going through the rezoning process, before we had the public hearing at the planning commission, as you may remember, we had an informational hearing, informational meeting, which talked about some of the components of the potential project, what the potential use was, what it could be. And from that, we had the rezoning, as you know. It passed here, went to the township board, and it was ultimately passed by the township board. Now that it's in effect, the property is owned on M1 Light Industrial. After our informational meeting, and as we were going through the rezoning process, it was identified, and the applicant had actually agreed and indicated to have a second informational meeting to talk about the potential site plan and the layout of the development on the site. So one of the, so we had a second informational meeting where we went over some of the components of the site plan in detail, and we were able to answer a lot of questions from the community about what they were doing. Now, from the beginning of this project, one of the discussion items was, of course, the timeframe and what needed to happen in order for the company to get in the ground before winter. You know, a lot of times with these large economic development projects, we kind of start with a target date and work backwards, and try to figure out different methods to be able to do that. And one of the ideas that came up was our zoning ordinance permits the township board to enter into development agreements. And the development agreement can do many different things. In this instance, and I'll go through the key components of it, but in this instance, the development agreement really is only applicable to the phased improvements on the project. It doesn't waive any zoning ordinance standards. It doesn't waive any environment, or, excuse me, engineering standards that the township has. It simply creates an opportunity for the applicant to start construction on mass grading and building foundations before winter sets, and a little bit earlier than we typically allow in our site plan review process. In exchange for allowing them to construct early, the applicant has agreed, as per the development agreement, to give us a performance bond for the cost of installing the required trees on the site and doing the buffering. So, you know, in the slim chance that something does occur, and, you know, maybe they put the building up and are unable to complete the project, we would still have a performance bond, and we'd be able to ensure that the screening around the site has occurred. So that's the steps, and that's the purpose of the development agreement. We have, in order to accommodate this in the development agreement, we've split the approval of the project into two phases. So there's Phase One and Phase Two. What's before you tonight is approval, the site plan approval for Phase One. And so I'll just go through quickly what Phase One entails and what the procedure's going to be. So Phase One site plan approval, per the development agreement, only considers site grading, the stormwater detention pond, the building footprint and shell, parking lot, and the berms around the property. If the planning commission feels comfortable, based on the reviews and on the plans that were submitted tonight, and grants Phase One site plan approval to the applicant, the township will have the ability to review building plans and issue building permits for the building's shell and foundation. It'll also give the development It'll also give the developer the ability to begin performing site grading, erosion control, and earthwork, and including digging out the detention pond and then grading and installing the parking lot. So as I indicated, in order to do this, in order to move forward, they're going to have to give us a performance guarantee for the cost of the installation landscaping. We still haven't formulated what that cost is, but based on the, the plans, the fee is going to be at $350 per tree, which is consistent with what we would charge in our tree replacement schedule. So, so that's, that's essentially phase one. Under our normal process, we would require an applicant before we'd issue a building permit to go through preliminary site plan approval, full engineering approval, and have everything put together before we would issue a permit. But because of the size and scope of this project, because of the applicants need to get in by a certain timeframe, this, this is the format that we've devised and ultimately has been approved by the township board to move forward. So the development agree, so, sorry, let me just take a step back. So phase two really encompasses everything else that we would typically look at in the site plan review. So phase two, there's going to be a preliminary approval, which is going to be very similar to our preliminary site plan approval. And then there's also going to be a final approval after all the engineering and construction plans have been reviewed and approved by both Wayne County and our township engineer. So after the phase one approval, it really goes back to normal as far as our typical site plan review process. The agreement specifies, as I had indicated before, that they're going to have to abide by our township zoning ordinance, all of our engineering standards, and they would have to otherwise meet all of our normal rules for development. So this development agreement did go before the township board on July 17th, where it was approved by the township board trustees. And it also has been reviewed internally, and they've agreed to it as well. So that's the story behind the development agreement, and that's the, the explanations of what phase one and phase two approvals have been. So what, again, what, just, just to reiterate, what's before the planning commission tonight is, is that, that phase one site plan approval, which only encompasses the building footprint and shell, the earthwork, the digging out the detention pond, berms, and the parking lot. So those are the items that, that the planning commission will be considering. We did include, and, and, I'm not sure if McKinnon Associates is going to touch on it, we did include, because the plans that submitted were at a point where we could start our phase two preliminary reviews. So we did include a phase two preliminary review in your packet. That's not under consideration tonight, but, but we did want to include it just to show the planning commission some of the other items that, that, that we had considered and looked at as part of this review process. I will say that throughout this process, this has truly been a real team-based process between the township and Wayne County and our consultants to make sure that, that we were hitting all of our bases, make sure that we were not only finding ways to accommodate the applicant, but we were finding ways to make sure that we're protecting our zoning ordinance, protecting our engineering standards as well. So, so it's, it's been very positive thus far. That's, it's a brief overview, maybe not so brief overview, of, of the development agreement and how the timeframe has transpired, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Director Akers. Any questions right now on the development agreement or the time schedule? All right, then let's go to the planners and the engineers and hear what the review letters say. We'll start with you, Ms. Christian, first from McKinnon Associates.
Thank you, Ms. Christian. We have reviewed a request from ACS Michigan to build a 58,000, 54 square foot research and development facility building. As Director Akos mentioned, the site was recently rezoned from R1C, single-family residential zoning, to M1, which is light industrial with conditions. The project is being reviewed in two phases, and phase one, which is before you tonight, was, has a limited scope of review, which is limited to the site's grading, the construction of the stormwater basin, the building footprint and shell, the parking lot, and the berms. We have not just reviewed this for conformance to the zoning ordinance standards, it's also been reviewed for conformance to the conditional rezoning agreement and the development agreement that Director Akos mentioned. So the standards from all three of those documents have been applied to the review in front of you tonight. Now, the proposed use is a research and development facility with laboratories. Labs, major and minor, are permitted as principal land use in the M1 district by the zoning ordinance. There is an area marked on the site plan as tire and vehicle storage area. We believe this is a minor enough portion of the use that it can be considered as being accessory to the principal permitted use. However, a use statement do needs to be added to the site plan so that the site plan forms a complete package. As to site grading, there is an extensive plan for grading of the site, which involves the creation of a berm along the site's Michigan Avenue frontage, along the east property where the residential buffer is located, and along part of the railroad. As the applicant mentioned, they are currently working with Wayne County to abandon an existing non-functional drain easement on the property. I would defer to the township engineer for further information in that regard. With regard to height, the proposed two-story building's height is noted as 28 feet, which is within the maximum permitted height limit of 30 feet. The minimum required setbacks for the district, the proposed building does comply with that, and it also complies with the lot coverage limits for the M1 district. The lot coverage calculations have not specifically been noted, however, we believe based on just the size of the site being 75 acres and the footprint of the building, we believe it is likely to comply, however, the notation needs to be there on the plan. With regard to required information, there is a provision in the zoning ordinance that's got several minor site plan details. These are basic data items that need to be on the plan. We have reviewed those data items as part of phase two. The plan proposes a large detention pond along the east side of the site that is located within the 400-meter residential buffer, as was presented by the applicant's engineer. The slope of the detention pond is shown extending up to the east property line and is separated from the dent and neighborhood parcels by a chain-link fence only. Now, the landscape plan does not indicate any proposed landscaping along the east side of the pond. Now, the ordinance requires that the chain-link fence has to be a black vinyl-coated chain-link fence, so we recommend that the plans be revised to state that requirement. On most of the sheets, the plan is noted as being six feet in height, but on one of the landscape sheets, it's noted as eight feet. So it has to be consistent and be six feet across the board. The details of the actual plant materials and the counts of what is being placed in that berm is being, is being reviewed as part of our phase two development, and we will make sure that it complies with the ordinance standards at the time. At that time, we will also be looking at Wayne County standards for how detention ponds need to be vegetated, because some of Wayne County's requirements don't necessarily parallel with what the township requires specifically for where it has to be placed. So we will find out what the planting requirements are for the detention pond and make sure that it complies with the standards of both the county and the township. As to parking and loading, I would like the applicant to provide a clarification, because at the introduction, Mr. Tressel noted the size of the building as 70,000 square feet. One of the sheets did have it as 58,000, 54 square feet. That would make a difference to the parking. Although it's an industrial building, the parking requirement is larger, that clarification needs to be made. We will go by the data that is actually noted on the plan. Using 58,000, 54 square feet as the proposed building size, with 100 employees, which was what was represented to us, the site would require a total of 337 parking spaces. The site plan indicates a total of 194 spaces, which means it's deficient by about 143 spaces. Now, the zoning ordinance does give the planning commission the discretion to make a modification on the parking counts based on data presented by the applicant as to alternate standards or the fact that this type of use, considering it's a research and testing laboratory, is not going to receive the kind of traffic that a typical manufacturing facility or a typical industrial facility will require. We are supportive of not creating more parking than is absolutely necessary, but at the same time, it is important that adequate justification be provided when you're asking for a deviation from ordinance standards. The ordinance does allow for parking deferment, and so we recommend that the reserve area that is shown on the plan, as, if you look at your site plan, there are some areas marked as reserve parking, that too should be shown with a larger scale of improvement of the building and in the larger scheme of things, how much parking is going to be required and when that is going to be constructed. With regard to space dimensions, the proposed spaces do meet ordinance standards. All the spaces must be double-stripped as required. While landscaping will be reviewed as part of phase two, the applicant is laying out the parking lot at this time. Our landscape ordinance requires that no more than 20 parking spaces can be in a single uninterrupted row. There are a couple of spaces in all three of the lots, on the northeast and west sides of the building, that have more than 20 spaces in a row. So our recommendation is that required islands be put in at this time while they're doing the grading and the cement work. The actual planting will be finalized as part of phase two. The required number of barrier-free parking spaces for the amount of spaces that are currently shown on the plan is six. Right now, there are four spaces shown, so two additional handicap-accessible spaces must be added, and it must comply with ADA standards. The plan indicates the main access drive coming off Michigan Avenue as having concrete curbing on both sides. For the most part, all the access drive within the site are concrete curb, except for the access drive that hits on the south side of the building. There might be an explanation, but one side of that access drive has got no curbing on it. So our recommendation is that curbing be provided for all access drives on both sides. With regard to architecture and building details, the applicant went over in brief of the proposed elevations and has presented materials tonight. We hope to review in phase two a more detailed building elevation where the actual building material colors are noted. What was shown today is actually noted on the plans itself, and any mechanical equipment located on the roof, screening for it must be shown. We would like to see what that looks like. The plan does indicate 10-foot landscape berms on the west side of the detention pond that extends all the way from the east side of the vehicle evaluation area up till the north around the parking lot, and then it goes along the railroad for a significant distance, and a similar landscape berm is proposed along the Michigan Avenue frontage. By having the berm on the east side of the building rather than the east side of the detention pond, we believe the residents would actually be able to see just the fence, perimeter fence, and the pond. Why we would generally prefer that the berm be on the east side of the pond rather than on the west side of the pond close to the building, it is our understanding that some of the residents actually express their preference for the berm being away from them and they having a clear line of view in that area. Our final recommendation on the berm, however, would be that what is shown along the south property line seems to stop midway. Our recommendation is that the berm be extended all the way along the south property line, so you'll have a consistent berm around the entire property to provide the required screening from all sides. As I mentioned, pursuant to the development agreement, this is a review of only phase one, so our letter is very limited in its scope of review. So anything that has not been mentioned tonight will definitely be covered as part of phase two and reviewed in detail. So our recommendation at this time is if the planning commission is in agreement with the planned layout and allowing the planning director to approve the revised phase one plans confirmed to the conditions of approval, we would recommend that preliminary and final site plan of phase one project pancake be granted tonight, subject to the conditions that are listed in our letter tonight. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks very much. I think let's hear the engineers' recommendations at this point. Mr. Potter, and also we have a recommendation from the fire marshal, and then we'll get into the discussion and questions. So, Mr. Potter, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. We reviewed Project Pancake for phase one, what we consider mass grading, which is pretty typical for these types of projects that are fast-paced. So mass grading is, is what they're doing, is the land balancing of the project, and as opposed to later, we'll get into fine grading details and the engineering plans. From that perspective, I'll start with our recommendation is that we do recommend conditional approval of phase one in accordance with the development agreement. And our comments are listed on here, and again, from strictly a mass grading standpoint, we do cite some comments that we've discussed with the applicant's engineer, that we would want clarification during preliminary plan, which is being reviewed now, prepared now. And I'll just give you a brief summary of that. We like, we would like clarification as to how we would maintain an access to water lines and the sewer lines, and so there may be some adjustments there. Also, we're looking for some more information on the detention pond, whether or not there's soil borries and whether or not there's seasonal groundwater information. With that being said, we're confident that we can address those issues with the applicant's engineer during the preliminary site plan approval process, and we'll be discussing that in the future. So at this time, we recommend approval of this.
Great, thank you very much. Director Akers, do you want to make any notations from the fire marshal's initial review?
Yes, so in the fire marshal's review letter, they, they had indicated nine comments. Many of these comments are items which are either the typical comments regarding Knox boxes or, you know, tour radio enhancement, and some of the other comments are items that are going to be considered in phase two review and during building plan review. Specifically, they require, talks about outside wheel turning radiuses for fire department access, making sure that fire department access rows are provided within not more than 100, that the exterior wall, the first floor of the building is not located more than 150 feet from fire department access rows, sliding gate access, fire suppression in the building, and then fire department access to some of the, the outside testing areas and hydrant locations. These are items which are going to be addressed during phase two and during the building plan reviews, and our fire marshal for phase one has recommended approval of the plans with the understanding that the mentioned items are going to be addressed during future phases.
Great, thank you very much. I think with the commissioner's approval, if you can hold on to your questions or comments, I'd like to ask the applicant to come back up and at least respond to some of the points that were raised in the review letter. Particularly, we want to hear about the parking and why you're proposing what you're proposing, since we'll be asking in, in a recommendation to make, accept that change.
Currently, the parking being proposed is in excess of double what is currently being used by this producer, okay, in their current facilities, okay? So we feel that it's adequate. We do have a place that it can be monitored, and we have shown 80 additional spaces if we need them. We do not expect to need them, okay? So yes, it is less than what is required, but for this particular use and, and what's going on in the building, it's more than adequate for what their needs are.
And the square footage, is the 54,000 square footage?
It's actually 64,500, roughly. Jerry can speak to that.
Okay.
Okay. We've always been talking 70,000 in our team meetings, and that's why I said that.
Okay, okay.
But it's just recently.
Right.
It's a little hard to read on the code sheet, but the code summary gives the tabular areas for the buildings, and the 56,000, 54 square feet is taken from the tabular area that excludes a couple of mezzanine areas that also exist in the building. Those two mezzanine areas push that 56,000 up to around 63,500, I think the number is, plus or minus. Now, whether you exclude those mezzanine areas in your calculations for parking, I don't know. So generally, they are, but sometimes they're not, because they're strictly, you know, equipment locations, they're not occupiable spaces. So we have some municipalities that will say it's not required to be included in the calculation. There was a question regarding the, the outbuilding, the storage building. The customers asked for a place to park some confidential cars. So we have, it's basically a, a small garage-type building, but it's also going to be used for tire storage. And that building, I think, is around 1,400 square feet. I can't remember the exact number, so same thing. It's strictly for parking vehicles, it's not an occupiable space. Does it need to be included in your calculation for area for parking? I would think not, but that, I'm not familiar enough with your ordinance to know whether it has to be included.
All right, can you add something? With regard to the mezzanine floors, they do have to be included, because parking is based on gross square footage, not net. I was not aware that the tire storage is actually a structure. I thought it was a paved area, so that is additional clarification. We will be looking at phase two. Architectural details of what that tire storage structure.
I do have an 11 by 17 drawing of that particular small building with me. If you wish to have a copy, I can provide it.
Definitely, yes. Thank you.
All right, so are we looking at changing the equation on the parking? In your recommendation? And I'm not going to make you do that at this exact moment, but we'll give you some time to, to do that and talk about other things. Okay. Let's see. Let's see. The question about the, we have some berming questions, so the full length of berm on the south side, and also the location of the berm, and then the chain link fence and black-coated chain link fence. Can you respond to those questions?
Certainly. We've had a couple of public hearings, as Ron has referred to, and we've offered to berm close to the road and all that stuff. But it's been the, it's been expressed to us in those public hearings that they would like to have the more open space like they currently have and to have that further remote from their properties. There's a couple of houses that are very close to the property line of this site at the corner of Cross and Cemetery, who very particularly ask that if we can move it away, it would be better in order to have it there. We're happy to have that. We have no use that is planned for that 400 feet because of the agreement for the rezoning, and so it just don't, provides them more natural space, okay?
Okay. What about the possibility of extending the berm on the south side along the railroad?
We'll be happy to look at that, okay? Right now, I mean, the railroad and what's going on on-site are about at the same elevation. So if a train went by and they looked in, if we had a 10-foot berm there, it wouldn't make any difference because it'd be down there, okay?
All right. And black-coated chain link fence, acceptable?
Well, everything's acceptable, yes.
All right.
We will respond to all the review letters, item by item, okay? So that there is something documented on that we will comply, and if we can't comply, we'll tell you why we can't comply. But we intend to comply, okay?
That's good to know. Thank you. I'll go to questions or comments from the commission at this point. Any, anything for the applicants and their various partners? Anything on the development agreement? Anything for the planners or the engineers? Anybody? Mr. Jar.
The berm along the southern border by the railroad tracks, that's not required to have a berm, right? Your recommendation was that they put in a berm, but it's not because of a requirement, correct? All right, thank you.
That's it?
No.
Oh, keep going. It's all yours. The floor is yours.
There's a building on the plan that's referred to as refrigerated storage. What is that?
That's a, I don't know.
Refrigerated storage?
Refrigerated storage. They currently have a unit at their site in Ann Arbor. It looks like a shipping container, but they use it for an ORVR test. It's a, it's a off-gas emission test for a vehicle that's just sitting after maybe it's been fueled or something. And for cold test, that's what that unit does. It was less cost for them to purchase a unit that they could sit outside on the ground adjacent to their building, pull a vehicle in there, get it to temperature, do the testing inside of that. When they're done, they pull the vehicle out. So they intend to move that shipping container, because that's, I admit, that's what it looks like, over to the new facility, and we intend to place it on the south side, obviously on the opposite side from Michigan Avenue, near the building, because it has to be fairly close to the building in order for the vehicle circulation that they have to do from inside to go out into that unit and then back into the building again.
So essentially, a test chamber?
It's a test chamber, yes.
Okay.
And it performs a cold test for a, just an off-gas emissions test from a vehicle that's just sitting after it's been fueled or something, so.
Thank you.
And it can get painted to look the same color as the building, so.
Anything else, Mr. Jar?
Yeah, one more.
No, that's okay.
You said that the parking requirement for the applicant is sufficient at their current facility, and so you believe that the parking at this proposed site will be the same. Are the two facilities the same size?
They are not.
Okay.
Okay, and currently, they have 40 employees, okay? We figured 100.
Okay, so you increased the amount of parking at this facility in expectation of the increased size?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
In the space planning that we have done for the office space in the building is based on a potential future occupancy of 150. So we understand that that might be based on this facility, their maximum occupant load for the number of employees that would be there at any one time. Add on a little bit for visitors, you take away for the sick and for traveling, 150's probably the right number.
But if experience, you know, we have shown where we can create spaces. If there becomes a problem, there is right out front of the building space for mother ready spaces.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the commission? Anyone in the audience, questions or comments on this item? All right, I really appreciate you saying that it is certainly your plan and intention to comply, but before we take any action tonight, I just want to ask about the question about the curbing and the entryway.
Yeah, the curbing, what we've done on the curbing is we've got some potential for the water to run off the south side of this, this road here.
Okay.
And going down around here and down here. And it will go into open swales, big open swales, and be able to be cleaned before it runs out into the detention pond, forebay, which is the second cleaning process, which will then go into the detention, and then ultimately to the dent and drain. So the real intent is to let the water run off of this. On the inside of this, we have curbing. We want it to have a finished look. We want it to be very presentable.
Great.
But on this side, where we have the ability to do water quality type issues, we're asking that that not be required.
Okay.
We've done a number of projects in the last 10 years or so where with sustainable design practices the way they are today, there's a lot of surface drainage that's being done now for, for surface parking, where it goes into bioswales and then into bio-retention so that you're not burying pipes. In order to collect that water, you've got to have curbs and you've got to have catch basins, and that's just forcing everything underground. And then you have to go and dig a big hole in the ground in order to put detention in to hold that water before it can be discharged from the site. So we're seeing an awful lot more of the surface drainage and removal of the curb system for that reason. You still have a hard shoulder that's a stone shoulder that, you know, protects your pavement edge and then still provides a way of getting that initial filtration process, too. And the stones are there to allow you for when you snowplow in the wintertime, it'll collect the salt there, too. It keeps it away from some of the landscape that is beyond that edge. So it's becoming more and more practical and common to see less and less curb and gutter being put into parking areas.
Does that also impact the possibility of islands that will divide up areas of parking?
You can still put in islands. We've done parking areas where we have a small little bioswale that is where it used to be a curved island. Now it's a little recession, and it has a small area drain in it that will still allow that water to go and convey out into the rest of the detention system, the stormwater system.
Just so we're clear, though, we're not proposing bioswales. We're not proposing exfiltration of water because we have a perched high ground in water here, and we're having to raise the site just to get it up so that we don't have water problems of water coming back into the building once it's built.
So the possibility of some kind of island to separate parking and the parking lot as recommended in the ordinance, that you can still deal with?
Oh, yeah. That's just moving the islands up and down the row of parking, and if we need to add another one, we will.
Okay, great. So then we'll just leave it to you all, the planners and the engineers, to figure out on the curbing and the parking and the islands, so, all right.
If I may suggest that the curb not be paved but be deferred to further review by the township engineer so that if it's necessary for engineering reasons, then a modification can be made, not for any other reason. And with regard to parking, if the board would just like to correct your numbers, based on the applicant's representation of an approximately 63,500-square-foot building, the parking required would be 359 spaces. That is 259 for the gross floor area and 100 for employee. So the deficiency would be 165. It would likely be a few more spaces because they will have to add landscape islands to the parking lot, so they might lose a space here or there, too. We will review the parking lot for conformance as part of Phase Two to make sure the landscaping is in there.
All right, but you need to know number of parking spaces or square footage of parking in this Phase One recommendation?
No. The intent for Phase One truly is we're going to, we've dropped plans here today for preliminary site plan approval, okay? And we hope to be back here in a couple of weeks, okay? But the intent of today is, as Ron said, to be able to start moving dirt, getting a building pad put up, and to shell the building, even though there is other things in there like parking lots and stuff. We will be through preliminary site plan and hopefully final site plan approval before those activities would commence, okay?
All right. Then the only other question I have is for staff, and that is that we have put a huge burden on you and your staff to make sure that i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and that papers are filed as they need to be filed, and payments are made as they need to be paid. And I know you guys are up to the task, but just wanted to recognize that with this process and to keep things moving in the pace that you have set for us, it will really add to your workload, okay?
I understand approximately that. Thank you.
If I may say one more thing. We've been involved with this project, and we've looked at 15 sites, both in Michigan and Ohio, okay? This site is number 15. That's why it's not as far along as maybe some of the others were, but we feel that it is the right site if we can build what has to be built here, okay? So you folks should be very proud. We came to your township administration, we explained the problem, we explained the timing, we said we had to think a little bit out of the box, okay? And they, they rose to the, to the question, and they have gathered all the forces, as has the county, and has, as had MEDC, okay? So, you know, we could go to Ohio and build, build this same building, and they'd be running out the door to help us carry bricks, you know? But we think it's the right spot, okay?
Wait, are you asking us to carry bricks tonight? Chestjacking?
No, but I'm just saying that you guys need to know you stood the test of 15 sites, okay?
I appreciate that, thank you.
If we can make all this happen and keep this on track, you'll be the recipient of all that effort, okay? So I just want you to know, the staff has been great, the planners, the consultants have been great, and we're moving this at a much accelerated pace than what would be normal, but we have to because of the weather, because of the occupancy time, and all of those other kinds of things that have to happen for this user, okay? This user needs to be in this building by the end of '19.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Commission or audience? Are you ready to take action on this request tonight?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Boynton.
I move that we grant Phase One site plan approval per the approved development agreement to construct an automotive research and development facility for the applicant ACS Michigan located at 5015 Michigan Avenue, otherwise also known as the Harold Smith Farm, pursuant and subject to the recommendations of letters from McKenna dated August 3 of 2018, a letter from Dave C. McNally, our fire marshal, dated July 31 of 2018, and of the letter from Fishbeck Thompson-Carn-Huber Incorporated, letter dated August 3 of 2018, to include, or do I need to include the adjustment of parking calculations from this adjusted to 359 from 337? And the adjust, no, the adjustment of the berm was not required, right?
Was not required.
Right, okay. I think that covers everything. Yes.
I think we have a motion. Is there support? Support from Mr. Kelly. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Step one of, we've already taken 100 steps, I think, so here's the new...
And get in the script.
Thank you. We look forward to seeing you back here, hopefully in a couple of weeks. Of course you may. I think they have some equipment to take down. We'll get ready to move to Item Two, which is the rezoning. This will be the applicant US Signal Properties LLC requesting to rezone the property located at 9275 Hagerty Road from C1 General Business to OT Office Technology, subject property located at 9275 Hagerty Road. We had the public hearing on it. I think we're going to have some movement in the audience if you want to wait just a second to come forward. US Signal, I think we're ready. Thanks, all. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. I have nothing further to add to the rezone request, but I'd love to field questions from your team if you have any.
Okay, great, thank you. We're shuffling some papers up here, so let's make sure we get where we need to be. Director Akers, do we have recommendation from you?
This rezoning request, actually McKenna and Associates prepared the review letter dated August 1, 2018.
McKenna and Associates, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have reviewed a request from US Signal Properties LLC to rezone a parcel of land from C1, which is General Business District, to OT, which is Office Technology. The site is located on the northeast corner of Tyler and Hagerty Roads and has a total area of about 7.19 acres. There are specific standards in the zoning ordinance which are in turn based on state law, which the board uses in order to make a recommendation on a request for rezoning or changing the zoning on a property. I shall summarize those in brief. The first one would be consistency with the goals and objectives of the master plan and any sub-area plans, in case the master plan was amended or the conditions changed since it was originally adopted. Now, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act requires that the zoning ordinance be based on the master plan that is adopted. The township's original master plan is dated 1989. It's since then been amended in 1999, 2000, 2001, 2007, and 2010. There are various overlay plans and assorted sub-area plans. The master plan designates the subject site and the abating parcels to the northeast and west as office or light industrial. Now, the proposed Office Technology zoning is consistent with the vision in the master plan, more so than the current C1 zoning of the property itself is. The OT district is intended to accommodate uses in a campus-style setting that provides easy access and proximity to freeways and interchanges. Now, the existing uses in the area and the development trends that the township has seen clearly indicates that there is more need for light industrial, office, technology-based uses rather than commercially zoned parcels, especially in this area. The future land use plan map has clearly denigrated commercial corridors, and those are not located in this part of the township. The second criteria is consistency with the basic intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. Now, the intent of a zoning ordinance is to allow for organized and planning of land with a clear vision to it. The subject site is the only commercially zoned parcel in an area that is mostly... The subject site is the only commercially zoned parcel in an area that is mostly occupied by light industrial, office, and technology-based uses, and it's got Wayne County Community College to the southeast. While having a commercial use at this corner would probably be of service to either the students at the community college or the employees in and around the area, the commercial corridor, the main commercial corridor with Belleville Road is just a few miles away, or they can always head north and there are commercial uses available. It's not typically necessary at this corner. Further, commercial uses typically do experience higher volumes of traffic throughout the day because you have traffic, customer traffic going in and out, and it would be a concern for this area to have a higher volume of traffic compared to an office use where people come in the morning, they're there for the day, and then they leave in the evening. The proposed use for office or technology and research-based uses will likely be more consistent with the existing development pattern in that area. The third criteria is the capability of the street system to safely and efficiently accommodate the expected traffic generated by the users permitted in the requesting zoning district. Now, along the site's frontage, Hagerty Road has two lanes in each direction but no center turn lane, and Tyler has got one lane in each direction with a center turn lane. The corner intersection is signalized, which is definitely a benefit. With an area of about 7.19 acres, if you were to develop the property for commercial uses, you could get a significantly sized commercial building on there with a lot of tenants and a lot of required parking. So we believe at this time an office technology-based use will generate less traffic over the period course of a day when compared to a commercial use. However, a more detailed traffic study would be needed to evaluate exactly what this difference might be, and that is something that would be reviewed as part of the site plan approval when the proposal comes through. We are not aware of any constraints on the water and sewer system in this area, that the applicant would have any difficulty in having their needs met or meeting the township's requirements. We are not aware of the zoning ordinance or zoning map having any error because of which the request for rezoning is before us tonight. Over the last few years, the township has experienced a higher demand for new industrial development and expansion of existing industrial uses. Recently approved site plans include LNW Engineering, Belov Industries, Constellium, Contractor Steel, Costco, Ashley Capital, Densky Warehouse, Mazur Polymer, and Continental Canteen. That is a lot of industrial-based uses for a township our size. So it is a significant market trend that shows there is a growth and a demand for these type of uses in this area. The township also recently rezoned a large parcel to M-Mon that was just before us tonight as in ACS to show that this is the potential development trends that we are seeing along the major corridors. The proposed rezoning that the applicant is requesting will not result in exclusionary zoning, that is one of the criteria. Now, if the site is rezoned from C1 to OT, there are still many areas available in the township that are zoned C1 where the uses can be met, and if it's not zoned OT, there are still other OT zoned parcels. So any lawful land use or lawful zoning is not being excluded in this case. Currently, the majority of the site is a flat, grassy piece of land. According to MDEQ Wetlands Map Viewer, there are no wetland areas in any portion of the site, and we also checked on FEMA's website, there are no floodplains located on the site either. So we are not aware of any major physical or hydrological constraints that might affect the development of this property. Now, the permitted uses and special land uses in the OT are summarized for you over here. The area of focus for this standard is basically what impact OT might have on any abutting residential uses. All of the uses to the west, south, and east, and a portion of the north are non-residential. However, there is one non-conforming, single-family residential use that is located immediately to the north of this property. Now, the intent of the OT District is to develop it with adequate landscaping, circulation, and lower impacts when compared to a commercial property, so it is intended that heavy truck traffic, excessive noise, glare, air pollution, and such kind of things are not going to be the byproduct of the kind of uses that is expected in an OT versus just a straight industrial parcel. The zoning ordinance does have provisions where green belts and landscaping is required in order to protect adjacent residential properties, even if these are non-conforming uses. So at such time when the applicant comes for site plan approval, we shall review the hours of operation and any required protection for the residential user currently located abutting this property. If a rezoning, if the site is rezoned to OT, the boundaries of this requested district would be contiguous with another OT zoned parcel to the south side of Tyler Road. Now, just east of the I-275 interchange, just down the street from them, is a large chunk of OT zoned parcel, which is where the Visteon complex is located. And right across the street from them on Hagerty is Chase's corporate facility, which is also a data processing center. So the use is similar and keeping with what is already found in the area. If the rezoning is requested, the requested rezoning is considered more appropriate than any other zoning district. As I mentioned previously, based on market trends, we believe either an industrial office or an OT is the best, and based on existing development patterns, the requested rezoning proposed by the applicant is most consistent with what would be for that area. Also considering the concerns that the Planning Commission has recently heard with regard to the truck traffic on the Ecos Hagerty Road corridor, and OT use would probably be of a lower impact. If the rezoning, because there are no specific use noted on the application, we cannot comment on whether the proposed use is appropriate, but the applicant has mentioned tonight that it is a data processing center, and we understand that that would be appropriate for this area. Now, amending a C1 district, which is purely a commercial district, to allow for office or technology use wouldn't be a reasonable step. The ordinance does say, do you think it is better rather than changing the zoning on the property to amend the existing zoning designation to allow for the use? We don't think a data processing center is something that should be put into a C1 district, so that is not a viable option. And finally, if the rezoning is requested, it's not going to create an isolated or incompatible zone in the neighborhood. Now, the site is adjacent to an OT zoned parcel on the south side of Tyler, and it's less than quarter mile from a large OT corridor on I-275. It's not going to create a spot-zoned parcel. The proximity of the site to other office and technology and other industrial uses makes this an appropriate zoning for this property. At the time of site plan approval, any potential impacts resulting from traffic or other aspects of the use will be addressed through the use of landscaping, hours of operation, and circulation in and around the site. Based on the proposal before you tonight, it is our recommendation that the Planning Commission recommend to the Township Board of Trustees to rezon the parcel from C1 to OT designation, since it meets all of the zoning, all of the criteria established in the zoning ordinance, as listed in our letter dated August 1st for compliance with the standards of a rezoning request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you very much. Questions or comments from the Commission for the applicant or for a planner? Anyone? Pretty clear? Anyone in the audience? Questions or comments? You must have really done your homework. You sailed through the public hearing, and now you sailed through the review. So this would be a recommendation to the Township Board. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kelly.
I move that we recommend to Township Board to rezon the property located at 9275 Hagerty Road from C1 General Business to OT Office Technology, based on the analysis detailed in the McKenna letter dated August 1st, 2018.
Thank you, and support? Commissioner, I'll take Commissioner Jar's support. And again, it's a recommendation to Township Board, so it's a roll call vote, please. Joan Franzoy?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Donald Boynton?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Agnson?
Yes.
Sherry Bugg?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes.
All right, so now you go forward to Township Board. Director Akers can make sure that you're aware of what agenda that looks like it will land on, and we look forward to seeing you back here again sometime soon with site plans.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next. We have special, we have the air conditioning going off. Great. Special approval request, the applicant, could you tell me how to say your name, please?
Kieza.
Say it again.
Kieza.
Kieza.
Let me hear from you.
Excellent, thank you. Kieza Architects is requesting special approval to construct a multi-tenant retail building with a drive-through restaurant. The subject property is located at 10573 and 10551 Belleville Road. Will the applicant come back up, and then we'll have presentations from our professionals.
Ron Kieza from RA Kieza Architects, Jason Kishmish, one of the owners. As I said earlier this evening, we got approval from this community in November, I think of '16, for the special use for a drive-through for a 5,000-square-foot building. So we're back here tonight with a 9,900-square-foot building with a drive-through proposed also. With that being said, it's a lower-volume drive-through user, so instead of the 15 spaces I believe that your ordinance requires, we have 12, and we've been working with Ron on that, and I believe that everybody's satisfied with that total, based on 15 being a lot. All the other requirements, spacing between the order station and windows, has been met. We've got a really nice design behind the building for the car stacking, separated distinctly from the loading behind the building. We've got a green area back there with some planting, so we've tried to address that. And we've got the rendering of the building with the front elevation. Before you hear, and if we get through this process tonight, obviously before final approval, we would bring samples back for the actual colors of the material selected, but at least you can get an idea of what we're looking at. So with that being said, I'll turn it over.
Great, thank you very much. We have recommendation letters from McKenna and Associates, both for special land use and preliminary site plan approval, and then we'll go to Engineers and Fire Department. But which one to start with first, Ms. Kishmish?
Madam Chair, we should start with the special land use request first, so that the Board can take action to, action on it, because that would go before the Township Board, and then we can take up the site plan review letter.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. As Mr. Kieza summarized before, this project had appeared before this body towards the end of 2016. It had received approval for special land use, and preliminary site plan had been granted at the time. Since that time, the applicant acquired more land. They added a parcel to the north to the site plan proposal. So at this time, their proposal is to demolish the homes that are existing non-conforming dwellings on those parcels that they acquired. They're planning to demolish it and build a six-unit, multi-tenant, commercial building that's 9,932 square feet in area. There is an unidentified drive-through on the northernmost side of the building, and since the site is zoned C1 General Business District, the drive-through does require special land use approval, for which they are before you tonight. There are general standards for special land use approval. I will summarize this in brief, because this Belleville Road corridor is the township's prime commercial road corridor, so the standards are designed such that it is intended for uses such as these. The first criteria is promotes the use of land in a socially and economically desirable manner. As I mentioned, this road is characterized by a variety of commercial uses along the corridor. To the east is a residential neighborhood, to the north are other single-family residences. The demolition of the dwellings, which are non-conforming uses, and the construction of a commercial building is generally compatible with the surrounding uses. The second criteria is, is it necessary for public convenience at this location? Now, the lot is about 200 feet from the entrance of Beltire, and the ordinance allows for one curb cut on Belleville Road, and the applicant's proposed driveway is located on the north side of the site, as was previously required. Although Beltire is not permitting the applicant to access their driveway, typically in intensive commercial corridors, we do prefer to minimize the curb cuts and have internal access drives. It has to be something that adjacent property owners have to agree upon. In this case, Beltire has not permitted them, but they have a recorded access easement on its site for full future cross-access. So the applicant has got one driveway entering and exiting from the property, as they have shown. Is it compatible with the adjacent uses of land? Now, the C1 does permit a wide variety of land uses, including the drive-through uses. The site abuts R1B single-family residential to the east, other C1 uses to the south. Sites zoned C1 but used single-family housing on the north, and C2 extensive highway business to the west. Altering the use on the site from residential to commercial fits into the adjacent and the surrounding land use pattern that currently is. Any, the site plan has got a series of comments in this regard. Anything that is not addressed in the preliminary site plan will be covered at the time of final site plan review. The applicants have responded to most of the recommendations in our previous review letters to improve the site's ability to accommodate circulation, landscaping, and other aspects that are important to public health, safety, and welfare. We believe the site's demand for public services and facilities will be commensurate with what is required for a commercial use site, and it's not likely to adversely affect the ability of public services in the area. The site plan shows the turning radius that can accommodate a fire truck, and the circulation has also been reviewed by the fire chief in order to make sure that it meets their requirements. If the recommended conditions of preliminary site plan review are addressed, we believe the site plan will not cause any adverse effects to users on the site or any of the adjacent properties. There are no anticipated adverse impacts on the environment per se due to the proposed development. The site does not appear to be located near any wetlands or any sensitive natural features. Now, the site plan is compliant with the major requirements of the zoning ordinance. There are a few minor items, and those can always be addressed at the time of final site plan approval. There are specific standards for drive-through uses in the C1 district, namely that entrance and exit must be 100 feet from the intersection of any two streets, must have direct access to a paved major thoroughfare, no lighting or illumination spillage onto an adjacent residential property, and consideration given to proximity to existing places where children congregate for additional traffic or safety. At this point of time, we believe the applicant has met all of the specific standards related to the C1 use. So based on our review of the proposal for the general standards applicable to special land uses and the specific standards for drive-through uses in the C1 district, we believe the applicant has met the requirements of the ordinance, and our recommendation is that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the special land use, subject to addressing of all site plan concerns to the Township Board of Trustees.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the Commission on the special land use? Anyone in the audience? All right. We can take action on this part of the applicant's request now, or your preference, or we can go through the site plan and then come back and take action on the two of them? Does anyone have a preference? Do you want to hear the site plan review, or do you want to go ahead and take action on the special areas?
Maybe I should get this and get it out of the way.
All right. Is there a motion? It's a recommendation to Township Board.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Kelly.
I move that we recommend to the Township Board special approval to construct a multi-tenant retail building with a drive-through restaurant located at the 10573 and 10551 Belleville Road, based on the analysis and subject to the conditions detailed in the McKenna letter dated August 2nd, 2018.
Thank you. Support, Commissioner Boynton. Any discussion on the motion? It's a roll call vote, please. Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Medina Agnson?
Yes.
Sherry Bugg?
Yes.
Donald Boynton?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Franzoy?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We're gonna, we have you here, we're gonna move right into preliminary site plan. Any comments that you want to make on any of the recommendations from planners and staff?
Just wanted to thank you for the passage of the special land use. I think that basically with working with Ron and the consultants, I think we're really close on being able to continue through on this process. I don't think there's anything that's a hurdle to us that we can't work out internally between our departments, provided this board grants approval. Again, one of the things that we do want to mention that is important for this project, and we've tried to address, is we're one of the first projects that has dealt with your new zoning ordinance, I believe, when it came into play, and so, you know, we've dealt with that, and we've got a lot, a lot more green areas than what's required, and we've got a few more trees than what you require. We have a total of 48 trees on the site, which he's not happy with me for, but he's got to pay for them all. But it should look.
You really love trees here in Van Gundy.
It should look.
I know, no.
It should look very nice. Everyone that's seen the project, when they've come in our office for another type project, has liked the look of the building and the site plan itself, so hopefully this board feels the same way. But Jason's very serious, obviously. We're, like I said, we started this whole process about three years ago and still at it, so he's looking at developing your community. The good thing for him is he's had interest from national tenants that, you know, have been excited about coming into the community, so that's a good thing. And I want to thank Ron for his assistance through this process, and Vidya's office has jumped to address some recent submittals, and we appreciate that, and I spoke. And I spoke with your engineer on the phone, and we had a good conversation. So, again, we don't have, our civils not to the extent, obviously, because we don't have an approval yet, so we've just had preliminary discussions with our engineer regarding that. But we feel, obviously, based on where we were at before, we can address it and fulfill whatever requirements we need for that. So, with that being said, I guess I'll turn that back over.
Great, thank you. We appreciate your perseverance to want to be here and do all of the work. Let's hear what the recommendations are from McKenna Associates first, please.
Assistant applicant is proposing a multi-tenant building, and the specific tenants of the units are not known. They have submitted a concept plan for the building itself, but because the final flow plan will affect the parking counts depending, because some uses, even though they are located in a multi-tenant unit, have a higher parking requirement, slightly more detailed information is required if the applicant knows any of the tenants at this time, or is going to be placing a limitation on what kind of tenants can occupy the building. With regard to dimensional requirements, the proposed building meets all of the ordinance's setback standards. As to site layout and circulation, there is one proposed access drive along the site's Belleville Road frontage. Additionally, the planning commission has got a policy of reducing the number of curb cuts on Belleville roads, which has resulted in many sites using indirect access via shared drives. The proposed curb cut is, on Belleville, is acceptable, because it's the only access to this property, which is actually a consolidation of several parcels at this time. Cross-access easement is something that is required by the ordinance. The proposed easement aligns with Bel-Tire's recorded access easement, so that traffic flow is direct. There is an existing access easement, they are lining up with it. Easement documents and legal descriptions must be submitted in recordable form for the township's review and approval prior to final plan approval, so we make sure that it meets our standards. With regard to sidewalks, they are proposed on the west, south, and east side of the building, and also a crosswalk to connect them from the public sidewalk along Belleville Road. The sidewalk on the west and south side of the building are at least eight feet wide to account for two-foot vehicle overhang for the parking spaces provided over there. With regard to utilities, the existing overhead electric wires are proposed to be relocated in coordination with DTE, and I think the applicant is working currently with DTE's coordinator. The zoning ordinance requires that new utility installations to be placed underground unless it's determined to be completely impractical by either the planning commission or the planning director. If it's something that simply is not possible, but if it is feasible, it should be done. So, our recommendation is that unless it is totally not possible, that when they are working with DTE, those lines be relocated underground. With regard to parking and loading, the parking standards are different for retail establishments, restaurants, and with no drive-through and restaurants with drive-through. We have calculated each one of those separately, and the applicant meets all of the standards with a minor deviation for the drive-through restaurant. Now, the ordinance does require for a drive-through regular parking spaces, stacking spaces, and then RV parking spaces. They require a total of 15 stacking spaces. The applicant is proposing 12 stacking spaces. The ordinance does give the planning commission the authority to grant a deviation from the stacking space requirement, and we believe 12 spaces is more than adequate. Typically, a fast-food restaurant has 10 stacking spaces. Our ordinance requires slightly more than that. The applicant also has five additional spaces between the ordering and the pickup place, so that sort of provides additional stacking area. So, that's a deviation we would support. Altogether, 64 parking spaces, including two RV spaces, are required by the zoning ordinance. A total of 71 parking spaces, including two RV spaces, are being proposed. Although they're proposing slightly more than what is required by the ordinance, they are still less than the 20% maximum extra that is permitted, so we support the applicant's proposal at this time. Based on barrier-free requirement of the ordinance, the required barrier-free space two are shown, we recommend that a third barrier-free space be located closer to the building entrance, because its proposed location, where it's shown on your plan, would require a person with a disability to cross a parking lot, aisle, loading area, and a drive-through lane. So, one of those spaces is not appropriately located. If it could just be moved, because ADA requires that the barrier-free be located as closest to the building entrance as possible to facilitate access. The proposed parking spaces are shown clearly striped with four-inch double-wide lines, 24 inches apart. We believe the spaces all meet the ordinance standards as required, as does the loading space. With regard to landscaping, there are specific standards for landscaping adjacent to public right-of-way, which the applicant does comply with. Parking lot screening, which we have reviewed, the required trees along the public right-of-way, and the interior parking lot landscaping, loading area landscaping, and screening adjacent to R1 zone areas. I will not go over each of these in detail. I will just summarize the one area where we had certain discussion with the applicant. This is specifically subsection G, screening adjacent to a C1-zoned area. Now, the zoning ordinance requires between them and the adjacent property to south, there has to be a 10-foot-wide buffer with one tree per 30 lineal feet. Now, on the south side of the site, if you look at your site plan, the buffer is shown only on the easternmost 130 feet. With the parking lane and the maneuvering lane abutting, you can see on the south side of the property, which is the right-hand side of your screen, the drive lane and the maneuvering lane is right at the property line itself. On the north side, the required buffer is shown only on the easternmost 100 feet with a five-foot buffer along the rest of the property. Now, the planning commission does have the discretion to make such modification, although ideally, we do not recommend a waiver of landscape buffers. In this case, for improved circulation and to provide a bypass lane for the drive-through on the north side of the building, and to provide a full two-way circulation drive on the south side of the building, the elimination of that section of the buffer was necessary. The applicant, however, abuts Bel-Tire, which does have a full 10-foot-wide buffer there, so they are not immediately adjacent to another paved area. The intent for the screening between two properties was to ensure that we don't have oceans of asphalt, and there is some green area splitting commercial uses. In this case, although not ideal, the existence of a 10-foot buffer on the south side property does provide for some amount of landscaping. So, this is a deviation. Should the planning commission choose to agree, it's something that you could grant. Some minor comments regarding screening of mechanical and utility equipment. Now, the site is located in the Belleville Road overlay district, which does have some additional design requirements and standards. A few minor items still need to be met, and none of these are major enough that they cannot be handled at the time of final site plan approval. The proposed photometric plan has been submitted, and it complies with the ordinance standards, as does the trash enclosure details. There is details on a proposed monument sign, and the monument sign is designed to ordinance standards, but we had recommended additional pedestrian crossing signs. Since it's going to have six tenants, with one of them being a drive-through, signage that is essential for safe pedestrian movement through the site is something that we would recommend be installed. We finally defer to the city's engineer with regard to engineering details on this project and any necessary engineering adjustments that need to be made to comply with the ordinance standards. At this time, the applicant is before the planning commission for preliminary site plan approval. We feel comfortable enough that we recommend preliminary site plan approval for the proposed project to be located at 10573 Belleville Road, subject to the conditions that are listed in our letter dated August 2nd, and any outstanding items that would need to be addressed prior to final site plan approval.
Excellent, thank you very much. Mr. Potter, what do the engineers have to say?
Thank you. I'll begin with stating, we do recommend the planning commission grant preliminary site plan approval, and it is conditional. And the conditions are, based on the site plans that we reviewed, they were dated June 19th. We do show a listing of general and title sheet comments, and then we go through our typical review for preliminary site plans to show feasibility, meaning that the final details are going to be covered in the engineering plan review. So, we're looking at general feasibility at this point. For water, the water system, we're looking that they provide a base of design to make sure that the water service is going to be adequate for their use. Again, we'll look for that level of detail in the engineering plans. The sanitary, we are looking for more information as to how they're going to be tapping the township's sanitary main during the engineering plans. That usually involves a little more work, and we want to make sure that there's enough detail on the construction drawings to make sure that you're not affecting traffic in Belleville Road. For a storm drainage system, it's probably the most challenging part of the site. There is no open detention proposed. It's subgrade, it's in the parking lot near to Belleville Road. I do have a question for you at this point, whether or not you've had any correspondence from Wayne County. Have they commented yet on your proposal?
Our engineer has had just preliminary discussion, version out that we've got this project coming online, but that's the extent of it at this point in time.
In your previous submittals, did they grant, did they approve your project for the stormwater drainage?
The previous, we only got as far as the preliminary site plan approval, so we never got into engineering beyond that, because we stopped the project to look for more land to do a better project.
And the preliminary was here, but did you submit plans to Wayne County at that point?
Not civil plans, no.
Okay. And that's the only cautionary statement we have here, is that everything looks feasible, but you got to get through Wayne County's review.
Right.
Okay? And the township's detention required is even stricter, it's .1 CS per acre.
Right, yep.
So, that's the only comment, it is documented here, and if they do require extensive changes to that, obviously, it's going to affect the layout of a lot of things on the site here. So, we do comment on some general layout things for maintenance and things that we'll get into during the preliminary, actually, the engineering plans. Those are the biggest concerns we have in the stormwater, but we do recommend moving forward with preliminary site plan approval at this time.
Great, thanks, Mr. Potter. All right, and we do have a review from fire marshal. Anything of note, Director Akers?
No, there's nothing of note. Most of the comments in there are their typical comments that are addressed in either final site plan or during building plan review. I did want to make a clarification. I did call the fire marshal on Monday, because there was not a recommendation sentence in the review. I did call him to clarify that he is recommending approval contingent on those items being addressed earlier in the week, so.
Great, thank you very much. Questions or comments from the commission for the applicant or any of the professionals or staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Boynton.
For, for Ms. Krishna, on the, on the recommendation, I might be missing it, but when you were speaking of the, where the building is right up against the property line, and we were talking about the landscaping on one side, yes. Is that in the, in your recommendation? Am I missing it?
That is under item, I discussed it. It's on page 5, item G, screening adjacent to the C1-zoned area. I discuss it in detail, that it's all underlined. Page 5, top of the page. Screening next to C1-zoned area.
Yep, I see it there.
Yes. So, that's what it talks, it talks about maneuvering aisle being next to the property line.
Oh, and is that, is that what the recommendation says?
Yes. My recommendation is, if the planning commission is comfortable, you can grant the deviation to not have a 10-foot buffer and accept the proposal as presented before you.
Oh, I see it, I see it. Like I said, I was missing it, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I guess I would like to recommend that we eliminate that 10-foot buffer with trees. It's narrow enough, and I think when you've only got one driveway in the route, you never want anything to happen, but I sure would feel more comfortable with a little more room there than having to worry about getting around a bunch of trees or bushes. So, I would like to recommend that the planning commission grant that waiver and let it go with the way they proposed it.
Thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Chair. I agree with that, and I did go to the site and saw the extensive side on the south side of the trees, the pine trees. I'm assuming Bel-Tire planted those. I like that greenage, I think it's sufficient, so I agree.
Yeah, they have a 30-foot planting bed between what would be our curb line and their curb line, bermed with evergreen trees on it. So, with the spirit of the ordinance, I think it succeeded with how that looks.
And even further than that, we actually contacted Bel-Tire and tried to pick up a little bit of adjacent property from them. There's a bunch of utilities that run through that side of the property, so it makes it challenging for that ever to change. To give you guys just an idea, this building is almost a replica of what the Starbucks site looks like, a couple of persons over, and it's been a long and tedious journey here. We appreciate all the work Ron's put in this over the last couple of years, and we had a site plan approval initially, and just didn't get the interest that we would like at that time. He and I discussed at length trying to pick up additional property, making the project a little more appealing to tenants, and I think we have a really well-designed plan now, well-thought-out. I understand the reasoning behind the landscaper buffer and the ordinance, but I think, given what's there and the benefits of being able to access two-way traffic there, I think outweigh, you know, the landscaping, so we'd appreciate if we can get that, get the planning commission on board then. We're going to build a beautiful building for you guys.
Thank you very much. Great. Anyone in the audience? Questions, comments? Anything else from the commission? Ready to make a motion, take action?
Chairman.
Mr. Kelly.
I move to grant preliminary site plan approval to construct a multi-tenant retail building with a drive-through restaurant located at 10573 and 10551 Belleville Road, based on the analysis and subject to the conditions detailed in the McKenna letter dated August 2nd, 2018, the Fishback letter dated July 5th, 2018, and the Van Buren fire letter dated June 27th, 2018, with the approved deviation from the 10-foot buffer on the one side of the park.
Mr. Boynton. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, gentlemen. Keep moving forward, thank you very much.
Township Board.
No, you go back here next, for final.
Okay, so we're, we go to the township board for the special land use?
Yes.
Only?
Correct.
Okay, we'll be notified on that process.
I anticipated. This request will be before the township board on August 21st. And then, the next step for you, and we'll talk about this, but the next step for you would be to prepare construction drawings and submit them for review to Fishback and Wayne County.
Okay, thank you.
Unless we pick up someone's property and we switch it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you soon. Item 5, under new business, is the zoning ordinance text amendment that we have had the presentation, had the public hearing on. Anything to add, Director Akers?
No.
Okay.
Fairly minor. These data centers are fairly low intense uses, and I think that they fit very cleanly into our industrial districts.
Any questions or comments from the commission before we do a recommendation to township board? Anyone in the audience? All right, if you're ready to take action, we can send this forward. Is there a motion?
Chairman.
Mr. Kelly.
I move to recommend to the township board to amend the voting, add high-tech data processing and computer centers as a permitted use in the M1 light industrial zoning district.
Do you think so, or?
Support.
Support. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? And it is a roll call vote. Medina Japson?
Yes.
Sherri Bunn?
Yes.
Brian Kelly?
Yes.
Donald Pointon?
Yes.
Jeff Jar?
Yes.
Joan Fransway?
Yes.
Carol Thompson?
Yes.
You and that will go forward, and then they fold it into our zoning ordinance. We are to general discussion in tonight's agenda. Staff have anything for general discussion?
Bring up under general discussion is, well, there's a couple of things. A, I wanted to say thank you to the planning commission, I know this was a big agenda. We had canceled a couple of meetings and everything lined up today, so thank you guys for working through the large amount of information that was before you. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, I actually wanted to introduce Grace Moore sitting out in the audience. Grace Moore is our intern in the planning department. She is primarily assisting us with two things. A, it's day-to-day zoning operations, so she's going to be at the counter helping answering, helping to answer questions about day-to-day zoning items. And she's also going to be working with us on meeting the requirements of the MEDC's Redevelopment Ready Communities Program. So, MEDC has a program, it's a series of best practices for development review and public participation, amongst other things. She's going to be helping us comply with those requirements. She's actually going to be coming with- She's actually going to be coming before the planning commission on August 22nd to give an overview as to what a public participation plan is, which she's working on right now, and some of the, some of the, and to kind of give a status update as to where we're at with regards to that public participation plan. So, we're very happy with her, she's done an awesome job in our department, and I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce her.
Great, welcome. Looking forward to hearing more from you. Do you have anything you want to say?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any other items for general discussion tonight? Mrs. Atchison, anything? There's nothing else to do, motion to adjourn?
No.
And support?
Support.
Support Commissioner Atchison, motion, Mr. Boynton. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And we are adjourned, thank you very much. Good job, everyone.